Okay, everybody's ready to go? All right. So, welcome everybody to the special meeting of the City Council. I'm going to call this meeting order. All members are present for roll call. And we'll hold a council workshop on Saratoga Park update. And then after that, after the presentation, we'll have public comments during the meeting. So, I'm not sure who I want to start with. Who's going to lead? Who's our lead person on this one? Monica? Is Monica the lead?
No, I just want to introduce the architects or the consultants for this project tonight. Peter, Peter, I'm sorry. Greg will be presenting from Architerra. But we have a whole team here. The civil and the landscape architects are here to answer any questions about this project.
Okay, thank you.
We'll go ahead and get started.
Go for it.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Greg Denson with Architerra Design Group. I'm the Director of Design at Architerra. With me tonight is our Project Manager, Peter Dollman, and also our Civil Engineer with LD King, and also the architects here at the end who did the design for the concessions restroom building. So they'll go ahead and walk you through that as well. So, yeah, a good understanding of how it flows and also the architectural elevations. So, when we were first brought on by the city, we met out at the park and obviously reviewed it with Little League and other stakeholders. And through that process, we realized that the field is, you know, while it works for Little League, it is in grave need of upgrading. We also had a consultant from Musco Lighting come out and do a photometric test so the lighting itself doesn't meet the current Little League standards. So that was also a part of our review and design to look at as part of the site analysis. Drainage of the fields, the fields are not really graded to what a Little League standard would be. One of the fields, Field 1, currently drops about four feet, which is not ideal for the outfielder to be four feet below the person in the batter's box. In addition to that, you know, unfortunately, the perimeter fencing on these fields is low, so people will easily access the fields, bring their dogs, and so that is troublesome as well. Turf repair is in need, ADA accessibility throughout the park. And that's just talking about the fields. Obviously, the snack bar building is aged. It's not compliant with ADA. It's a two-story building. David could go into maybe a little bit more on that if there are additional questions about the noncompliance and restroom. Also, when Little League locks down the field, sort of the interior portion that houses the concession and restroom building, you're not able to utilize the restroom facilities. So folks that are visiting the park and using the playground, children, there's no restroom available and no access should Little League not be playing. So, if Little League's not playing, that's lockdown. So, we also wanted to look at drainage patterns on the park as well. So the park naturally drains from the north to the south and kind of pools on that southerly edge where there are some industrial buildings. And Carla's team will be obviously looking into that and trying to find solutions for containing that water on site so that we have infiltration and minimized runoff. The parking areas are, you know, they're in fairly decent condition. However, it's underserved for the purposes of the Little League. When they're having tournaments, folks are parked out on the street. It's heavily congested. So, they asked for us to also look at that. The adjacent apartment building to the east also has an existing tubular steel fencing, which unfortunately has been vandalized a number of times. People cutting pickets so they can get through. And so that was also a concern of the cities to look at that and see if there were solutions that we can come up to solve that. In addition to that amenities, it's not amenity-rich. You basically have an older tot lot that does not have very exciting playground equipment. It's aged. The rubberized surfacing is aged. There's an aged basketball court that is cracking. I don't even think it is to the standard dimensions of a basketball court. So that's the current, you know, condition. And so we were brought on to come up with a master plan and, you know, really listen to Little League, listen to the city stakeholders, and redesign this park for the future. And so what you have before you is our master plan. And I'll go ahead and start kind of from the outside and work in. So, the improvements, I mentioned the parking lot. So we've made improvements to the parking lot so that we could expand it and also put in more stalls. So the parking lot to the north with a one-way parking configuration, currently it's a two-way. We are able to expand that by 12 stalls and also add an additional four new ADA stalls. There is also enclosure fencing proposed. So, this was also desire of the city to close the park at night so that they don't have people that shouldn't be there, you know, going into the park. The parking lot to the south has been expanded by 22 stalls as well, using a similar one-way parking, angular parking configuration. So, between the two parking lots, we've been able to expand it by 34 stalls and really not eat into the usable area of the park and where the fields and playground were. We did in the plan, though, utilize the north park for a portion of this new basketball court. And what that has done is helped expand the playground areas, you know, in terms of its size and usability. I did mention the perimeter fencing at the parking areas where there would be access gates that could be locked down. And then along that easterly existing condition where the apartments are, we looked at a number of solutions and kind of discussed with city staff and feel that, if possible, a new block wall would solve that problem. You know, trying to put panels or other gates seems to be futile because it seems like there's a number of areas where it's been breached. So, we're looking to put in a new perimeter wall along that edge. Along with that, we have pipe gates that allow for Little League access or city maintenance vehicle access from the parking lots into the park, but would restrict general public from entering the park in their vehicle, including bollards, especially along that northerly park, parking lot where you have a decomposed granite trail there. There would be a series of bollards to keep vehicles from entering the park. The existing park monuments would remain in place. They're in good condition. And other than that, that kind of is the perimeter edges. As we work into the ball field improvements, this is a complete redo. So we're looking to start from scratch. And that would be obviously starting with a brand-new snack bar, restroom building, storage. Little League has a, they wanted to have a cabada and other rakes and material that they could use to repair the field. So they had given us some storage dimensions that we worked into the plan view. One of the things that we wanted to address in the design of that restroom and concessions building was the ability to service the parents and spectators that are watching the game. So when it's all open, there's adequate restroom facilities. But when that closure comes down and Little League's not playing, there's still bathroom access on the outside. So there's technically kind of two restroom facilities that serve both the interior and the exterior. Spectator bleacher seating exists right now, but it's kind of, you know, around the park, it's kind of on the outskirts, and then there's sort of a core. So it's a little bit more organized now. We opened it up. The existing building's kind of a round building, and we've got a lot more space now between those four fields you see before you to include space for both bleacher seating. And then I'll get into sort of that recreational amenity there in the middle. New covered dugouts. We have essentially four fields right now. They did not have a 225-foot homerun line intermediate field, and that is something that Little League was highly desiring. That's a level at which, you know, they can have other tournaments. And so we worked hard to see if we can fit that in. And we were able to fit two of those fields. Those are the fields you see on the east and on the south. So those are 225-foot homerun. And then they're also set up to where they serve a 50-70 type of, so they could be utilized as a standard 60 baseline or 70. In addition to that, all of the fencing on the fields would be increased to a six-foot height so that it's not as easy for people to just to jump in with their dog or their kids and just play pickup. Ramp paving at each of those four entry points into the center so that we still have that elevated seating effect like we have currently, but so that it's ADA compliant, so that you still have access to the field if you're a player and you have access to the spectator areas via wheelchair. Within that centralized area, we've set up kind of a centralized ballpark plaza that would have shade sales and a themed play equipment. And there's some examples on the photo boards, I'll show after my presentation, that illustrate what we're thinking there. But it's kind of like, just imagine enlarged baseball mitts and baseballs and bats, kind of a fun thing where kids can climb on it. As well as a Little League sponsor and photo wall was recommended. So, you know, when the athletes are done, if they want to take pictures, they can take pictures by it. Maybe it has the Little League's logo on that. In addition to the fields, we'll have a new scoreboard, bullpen warm-up areas, and also batting cages. So these were requests that were made by Little League. And one of the things that's out there right now is about it, the batting cages are to the south, and they have a storage building down there that's continually being broken into. So it really didn't make sense to keep that storage building in its current location. It's kind of falling apart. So that storage element, as I mentioned earlier, is integrated into that new concessions and restroom building. So that hits on most of the ball field components. So we have the two intermediate 225 homerun fields. We have a standard Little League 200-foot homerun line. That's the one on the north. And then we have a T-ball field there that you see on the west. So, they seem very happy with this solution. There was a desire for a 300-foot, but given the space that we have here, we just can't accommodate that. So let's talk a little bit more about the park amenity improvements. So I mentioned the playground. It's, it really needs an update. So I don't know if we'll be able to get it done, but I'm sure those that live in the area would really appreciate it. So a brand-new playground, which would have themed play, that would be, you know, to be determined at a later date. But one thing that was mentioned, someone said, "Well, maybe we could have like a zip line." They have ones that are made by the playground manufacturers, which is not like a, you know, somebody MacGyvering one at home, but one that's actually, you know, ASDM-approved. So, a zip line, and then obviously a playground structure that possibly meets all age groups, both 2-5 and 5-12. So, and it's kind of set up in like three play zones. And then at the center of that zone is a, is a new shade structure gazebo where you could have group tables and areas where it could be rented out, maybe for a party. And then that tot lot, as it faces the restroom facility, that would give close and easy access to those restroom buildings on the north side of the concession. The new basketball court, as I mentioned earlier, kind of takes over the eastern portion of the existing parking to the north. So it's nice that it's already kind of flat up there. We'll be able to do some minor grading to incorporate that. And then also that basketball element is close up there by Kingsley where it's easily patrolled if there's any issues. Beyond that, we've, right now if you're out at the park and you wanted to walk, you'd mostly walk up the easterly side and basically one parking lot to the other, and that's it. The new design incorporates a new looped walkway system using a decomposed granite paving surface, and it's approximately a third of a mile around. So folks, maybe parents that have one watching the game and want to get some workout in, they could do the loops. Along that walkway, we have four exercise stations as well. So, maybe even, you know, folks that are elderly in the morning want to get out and utilize it, that's there for their recreation. I mentioned the drainage on the southwest corner and on the, basically, south of that other field, we have water quality basins in which the decomposed granite path kind of meanders around and through those. So it's sort of, while it's a water quality issue and being able to contain it, it also allows a little bit of interaction with the planting as you walk through the park. There are plazas with picnic tables at those three entry points on the west, south, and east as you enter the ball field. So, parents that maybe don't want to sit on the bleachers, they could use those picnic tables. Or the public, it would be open at that point to the public, so the public could actually utilize those picnic tables as well. There's new landscaping, new tree placement. We're preserving a large oak tree on the south and some other sycamores and additional species near the tot lot. But other than that, majority of the park would have new tree planting to help provide more shade. I think I've hit on most of the improvements, other than there's a grass area you'll see south of the parking on the north. So that's a kind of an open turf area for play. It could also be utilized for warm-up for the teams that maybe arrive early and they're waiting for their game to start. Also, as part of that, we've included a new three-band trash enclosure that would have a solid roof structure over it. Currently, the park has two, yeah, has two trash enclosures, one at the north, one at the south, but they're small and they're not, they don't have an enclosure over the top. So illegal dumping is really easy. So, we're trying to avoid that as part of our discussions with Little League and the city. They requested it to be as close as they could to the snack bar concession so they can easily roll out and dump after the end of the games. So, once again, I'll say that's mostly in terms of the plan view, and David will go ahead and go through the actual concessions building and walk you through that plan and those elevations. But, these are some photo examples of the materials that we're talking about. So, on the left there, you'll see those sport field amenities, the covered dugouts, the baselines, the fencing that we're thinking of on the north there, the batting cages. Little League also requested that on the foul poles, we have that screen, so it's easy to tell if the ball is in for a homerun or foul. Just an example of what the themed playground equipment could be. At the, at the center there, you'll see kind of those enlarged baseball mitt and bat and baseball that I was talking about earlier. And then you'll see that zip line. That's more of that improved one by a manufacturer, playground manufacturer. So, safe and fun at the same time. Basketball court layout, decomposed granite on the upper right, that's kind of an example of a decomposed granite trail. It would be stabilized and compacted, so it's firm to the foot, but also easy to run and jog. And I would imagine we'd still have some doggy pickup stations as well within that perimeter. And those examples of those workout equipment stations, parkour stations. Some examples of tree species and shrub species that we're looking to incorporate into the park. Obviously, a lot of color and seasonal interest and, you know, working with city staff to make sure that maintenance doesn't become cumbersome. Some of these are adapted to those water quality basins where they can take inundation and moisture during our rainy months, but also are highly adapted to the drier months of the summer. So looking to kind of that Mediterranean, California-native plant palette. And with that, I'll turn it over to David to walk you through the architecture and elevation. And we'll be available for any questions you may have after the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Dave Foreman. I'm project architect with SVA Architects. Thank you for allowing us to present. Basically, the concession building had started off pretty simple and has since been expanded based on our conversations with the city and with the Little League. And what we wanted to try to do is to make sure that we provided enough room for the type of food service that will be available, as well as providing for storage and adequate restrooms and a meeting space. As far as the kitchen concessions after I'm through, I'll have our kitchen designers be able to speak to some of the details on that. So if you look at the floor plan, the meeting room and the kitchen is actually facing the baseball diamonds to the south. And to the north are two of the public restrooms that would remain open to the rest of the park, whereas the middle restrooms, the larger ones, would be gated off during the offseason. So that's where we wanted to try to bring in, allow enough people to use it comfortably, all of them actually, but when the Little League season's over, the gates are locked, the park can still use these other restrooms. We have room for electrical custodian, also an all-gender restroom, and dry storage. The equipment room is fairly large. We wanted to try to replicate what was out in the outfield. That building was, that was being vandalized. We'll put it in here, and there would be a roll-up door that would be allowed to move equipment in and out very easily. As far as the elevations, we wanted to try to bring in something that would be a little higher profile. It's all one-story, of course, but we wanted to bring in some, something dramatic and colorful to announce itself to the public that here it is. This is the center of the park. And so what we are proposing for the finished materials, if you look around on all four elevations, we're using a cement fiber board, which is a very durable material. It's very impact-resistant. We're also using a metal roof that doesn't require any maintenance, a very lightweight, but it's very durable and long-lasting. So there's really not much of any worry about wearing it out and having to replace it. So we want to make sure that this structure was as low-maintenance as possible, but also provided a very easy-to-use and easy-to-work-with as far as that goes. The restrooms are all ADA-compatible for accessibility purpose in each of the restrooms. So we have all the required widths and depths and all the accessories that will go with it. The other thing we'll get into later on is the type of finishes, flooring, walls, and so forth, as far as what the city would prefer. But right now, this is just conceptual. So basically, we also, over the, there are two openings, window roll-up doors and counter space for the concession area, and we put a, what we're calling a sign. I believe that could either be a permanent sign or an electronic board of some kind that would then be able to make whatever kinds of announcements or programs or anything you need. And that would be worked out with the city as far as how that would be handled as far as by the city or by whoever. But there is, we could do that out of the office or perhaps by remote. Any questions?
Well, that's, I think we're good for right now. And my understanding again is that the staff and the architect have met with the Moncler Little League. They've gone through it. They haven't contacted me of any concerns since I told them we're going to meet tonight. So, I think at this point, I'll ask my colleagues, do they have any questions at this point? Let me see. Anybody got their requests? How about Councilmember, did you have Mayor Johnson? It's Mayor Tim Johnson. Oh, let's start with Councilmember Clarissa Martinez, since she's the first on the queue. Let's start, let's just stick with questions. We may have some comments from the public. Just questions right now.
Thank you. So, okay, I'll just do my questions then. It looks like, a couple things. It looks like the basketball field was moved up to where the existing parking lot is right now. And if that's the case, it really looks like a lot has been added to this park, and still you're able to create additional parking spaces.
Yes, that's correct.
And then I'm trying to picture my aerial view of the park in my head, and it seems like, if I had to guess, I would say the existing baseball fields are probably about half to 75% of what is suggested here.
Right, yeah. They even currently kind of dominate most of the park space.
And then also this area above the fields where it looks like it's just a recreational grass area, is that going to be on a slope, or will that be pretty leveled off?
That will be leveled off. There is an existing slope. If you've been out to the park, you know that, that upper parking lot slopes down to that first field. So, part of the strategy was to pick up some of that slope in the island between the upper and lower part of the park, or part of the parking, that is. And so as you turn, if you're on the far west side, as you make that turn and come down to that lower level, we would be picking up some of that grade there. So it would be ideal for that area to be, to be as flat as possible.
Okay. And then there will be some sort of barrier between that area and the fields?
Correct, yeah. So we're looking at bollards along that edge so that we could protect from vehicle access into, into the park.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Here, Mayor Tim Johnson. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for Mr. Foreman. So, the existing building, which is a gazillion years old, had an upstairs area where whoever was calling the game could look down onto the field, if I understand correctly. So in this one-story buildings, where would that be able to happen?
I can actually, sorry. You're, so, yeah, we did look at one of the design elements. We've had a number of iterations here. One of the design iterations, we tried to position that building within the interior, and it just ate up too much space. So, we've spoken with Little League, and at the back of each of those backstops for the four fields, there's a scorer's table. So we would have it set permanent so that scorers would have access, and they'd have access also to the scoreboard and any announcements for that game. But that's directly behind the backstop.
Got it. You've answered my question. Thank you.
Will there be a speaker system then?
Yeah, we're, I mean, once again, this is conceptual level, but ideally, there would be so that they can make announcements or, you know, and there's, I did neglect to mention, I was kind of hinting to it, but the final design would have all-new lighting. Obviously, Musco lighting, higher poles, higher levels so that it meets the Little League standards. And there's other options available with that system where they, you know, the scorer could actually hit a button. Let's say one of the athletes hits a homerun, and it does kind of like a, almost like a flashing system where the lights themselves kind of blink on and off. You've seen that probably in some of the professional stadiums. So they have that available even at, at a park level if it was desired.
Okay. Councilman Lopez.
Gentlemen and staff, thank you for your time on this. You answered my question with respect to the electronic setup and regarding the score tables and those being able to announce, because that was my thought with respect to my colleague, Ms. Johnson. Where again did you say there were going to be bollards? Is it in that new proposed rec, rec grass area? Is that between the grass area and the northern parking lot?
Yes, it is. So those would be lined along the back curb of the parking lot there on that southerly edge of the northern parking lot.
And are there any in that southern, that southeastern parking lot?
There would be some on the portion that where you have the hardscape that kind of bands right next to the parking, just to help keep vehicle, there'd be a curb there, but we had envisioned a few bollards at that location, and then a pipe gate access where that widened entry point is for vehicle and maintenance. that widened entry point is for vehicle and maintenance access on sort of the northern part of that. Sorry, I don't know if this thing has a light where I could point, but...
The westernmost side of the apartment property, so what I'm assuming is on the, on our screen, those look like parking stalls. Excuse me. You're right about the changeling fence that exists. Having coached there for five years, actually, one of my players lives in that parking lot, in that apartment, and would actually come through the hole in the fence to practice in games, and his brother would tag along. So folks do unfortunately have vandalized that gate for access. Are you proposing, if I heard correctly, the block wall to align that whole stretch of that property dividing us and them?
Right.
Okay. Great. I appreciate that because that's been a long concern of many of ours. What about the remaining portion of the apartment property that runs horizontal in that southern parking?
On the southern edge, we had also anticipated the wall there as well. So it's a consistent perimeter fence with open fencing on the park, parking lot entry portions.
And I'm assuming the southernmost edge of the park where there is a, is it a car-rental business there, I believe?
Yeah, there's a number of buildings that actually are the boundary.
Yes. Is the existing wall going to remain? Because I know some of it has a brick wall with some fencing and other portion, depending on the property owner, it's just the brick wall. What's going to be done with respect to that? Have there been negotiations with the other property owners as to a mutually shared wall?
At this time, there hasn't been negotiations, to my understanding. We had intended on leaving it as-is. And, I mean, I think there was, in some of the discussion with the city, if we could even do a mural or something on that larger wall. Maybe it encourages people not to graffiti that wall, hopefully, maybe wishful thinking, but that was one idea that got kicked around.
All right. And I was going to touch on the lighting issue because that was one component I figured wasn't part of your presentation. So I take it that's another entity that we have to deal with concerning that.
Yeah, that would, it would be part of the master plan to have the new ballfield lighting as well as new parking lot and walkway lighting.
And perhaps staff, this would be a question more for staff. Again, having used that park, gosh, since I was eight years old to last year. If, when the summer hours take effect, of course, it gets darker a little closer to nine, I would expect the public's right to use that park up until that time. And of course, during the winter hours, it would be shut a little earlier. But nonetheless, my concern has always been adequate parking at that park. The way it is right now, there's just pockets of the park that are not lit and are dangerous to some folks. And unfortunately, we've had some serious crimes happen at that park in the past. So that is a concern, that if those, if that trail, that what you say is a third of a mile, the whole trail should be lit.
Right. We definitely anticipate that we would have post-top lights along that entire trail system. And then even if the park's closed, they could be set up to where they're on a security level or, you know, dropped back down or motion sensors. So if PD is rolling by and all of a sudden the lights are starting to brighten up as someone's moving through there, it would, you know, obviously be a clue that someone's in the park that maybe shouldn't be.
And then just on the northern property, northern side of the property, there is a fence that'll be locked at night, but the fence will extend even to partition off the basketball court.
Yes, it would basically encapsulate the entire park. So you wouldn't even be able to drive into the parking lot.
All right. I appreciate that. All of you, thank you. I'm very pleased. Thank you.
So the parking lot south will be fenced off and?
Correct.
And both parking lots. Okay.
Right. And one thing that we did in speaking and meeting with Little League, I mean, they're so busy that they basically play year-round.
Yeah.
So the enclosure time is, you know, maybe on those days in the, you know, morning weekday where they wouldn't have a game, obviously, but, you know, they'd have practice later on in the afternoon and they open up things. So that would be the time when that central area of the ballfields is locked.
Okay. Councilmember Rue.
Yes. As long as we're in lighting, one of the concerns I have, and it perhaps may be different from others, in looking at the lighting situation, we have an apartment complex there where people do work, they sleep, they may have different hours. Across the street, we have an apartment, some homes and some duplexes, again, people who may work different hours. Is there a way to make sure that the lighting is not too intrusive to them?
Yeah, so we did speak with Musco Lighting on this issue, and one of the things that they kind of told us through their discovery of being out on the site, that those poles that are existing, they're much lower than the standard poles. So you're actually getting more of that direct light spillover into those adjacent properties. With the new system, the poles are a lot higher, and there's more direct focus on the field of play. So that should be a non-issue, other than there's an existing use that they're used to. It's not like a new park where we're bringing in new sport light. There's still sport lighting, there's still going to be some ambient light, but it should be less, you know, intrusive into those windows. And then any of the post-top lights could have shielding as well to keep it more trail-focused.
And in lighting, you mentioned that the lights might go on if somebody's there. What about an animal that may be there? It's a park, there's a chance a cat or a dog could get out, a raccoon, a possum, on and on.
Right. That would be only if we elected to go with more like a motion sensing type of system.
I think that could prove to be a bit annoying to residents. If a dog is there and every time somebody's dog gets out or a cat
Right.
and wanders, these lights start going on, but we need to work that out. Also with the PA system, I hope we have something in place because there are, again, residents who are there, especially in the apartments, who may not want at 8:00 at night, as wonderful as we might want to hear the score, they may not want to hear the baseball score. They might want to go to bed because of jobs and things of that sort. Do we have some way we can work this out?
Yeah, I would think that, I mean, the Little League has been very cooperative. There's been good dialogue between the city, staff, and our team. And so I definitely could see that in negotiating kind of the operations, for sure.
I also appreciate the fact that you have restroom facilities that are open even when the game is not there, because this is still a park. People want to come and go. They may want to picnic, especially the residents across the street and those in the apartments who may not have any other opportunity. This park is their park. That's where they like to go and picnic and spend time with their children. And it's used, and I would hope that, you know, the plan you've incorporated, including the bathrooms, continues in this because we do need facilities for these families to be able to use and enjoy the park. And then the last thing is I do want to give a tremendous amount of thanks to Congressmember Norma Torres, who worked on getting a tremendous amount of funding for this. She worked in a, at a time when it was a little more difficult to get this type of funding. She did it, and I appreciate it, and we need to thank her for it. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Martinez, you have something else?
Yeah, just one, just one more quick question. Is the decomposed granite trail, is that wheelchair accessible?
Yes, it is.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay. I know we had some people who submitted speaking cards on this, on this regarding Saratoga Park or something different.
No, that was for the regular meeting.
Regular meeting, okay. So we have no other, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I just wanted to make up one more part of our little presentation was about our food service.
Food service?
Food service for the concession.
Okay, what's that food going to serve? Ribeye steaks, baked potatoes. Go ahead.
Yeah.
And good evening. And I'm Jeremy Carver with Rica Design Studios. I'm joined by my colleague Tommy Weack, and just want to kind of highlight a bit of what this concession stand is capable of. Our previous iteration, and it seems like you were quite engaged with the previous, which was significantly smaller, and that really limits the capacity of what it can do. What we have now achieved is have where we can serve open food. We now have a fryer within the facility. We have a space where a barbecue could be parked in the back of a house and be rolled out. So there's opportunity to serve a broader menu. It was also spoke of having the two windows. So we have one window. It's going to offer a bit more of that beverage side. That's a faster transaction than we have more of a, I usually deem it like an entree. But we have that larger window where you can serve like nachos and meal items such as that. So there's other things I want to highlight is just as far as a food safety standpoint and lining to the health department standards of today, that's what we're achieving now. So we have the appropriate storage. We have the appropriate three-compartments sink for proper sanitation and wear washing for the volunteers that work within that facility. We also have a prep sink with the indirect waste. So a lot of those measures are taking place within that, within the facility. I kind of went through it kind of quickly, but any questions?
Sounds good. You doing the cooking?
Well, he's my chef here. He was a professional chef for over ten years, so, yeah.
Couple of public comment cards, Mr. Mayor. I do have a couple of public comment cards.
On this item for Saratoga? Okay.
So first is Monique Borja.
Just to everybody know, you have five minutes. Go ahead. Hello, Monique.
Hi, Mayor. Hello, Council. Thank you for your presentation. Answered a lot of questions. I do have a few concerns. I don't know if this is kind of like an open thing or just voicing my concerns. First time here. You guys did address the park overflow. I do live off of Saratoga, which is right across from the park. I would say on the weekends, our street is congested. And, you know, if I want to have a birthday party, have family members over, they have to find parking down, way down the street, and it's very inconvenient. I do see that they're going to be adding a little bit more parking, which is great. My, another concern with that is will there be signage for, to let people know that are coming from off of Kingsley that if there's additional parking on the southeast side? I've been living here for almost four, five years now. I never knew that there was a parking on the other side. There's no signage. And, you know, if I'm not from the area and if people are visiting, you know, nieces and nephews, grandkids, they're not going to know, right? And they're just going to say, hey, there's parking right here. I'm going to park on Saratoga. I'm already going to park on Kingsley. So that's a concern. Will there be signage? You guys did address the openings for the apartment, so thank you. That is a very big concern for me. That's one of the big concerns because it just seems like it's being utilized not as a park, more of people doing business that they shouldn't be doing at a park with children there. And I voiced my concern to you, Javier, a few times. So, you know, and I think there is someone who utilizes that as for their business to do car washing. I don't know if you guys have seen that. It's really irritating because it's like, okay, people should be parking here, but they're doing their business there. Okay, the bathroom access, which is great, you know, I, because we don't see them and I don't really, don't care for it in a sense, just because we live so close, we can just walk back home. However, it is great to have because if we do want to have a party there, we can have our family use the restrooms there. But another question is how often will they be cleaned? While that, it is a great idea to have them open, but how often are they going to be cleaned and how often are they going to be regulated? Because if we're having them open, right, while softball season is closed, what is that saying to the vagrants that's starting to appear more into the city? Are we going to start seeing more of them hanging out at the park where it makes it uncomfortable for other people to go with their children? Again, great idea, but how are you going to manage that? And, you know, when talking about this park, I hear a lot of concentration that is around the softball area, but what about the park itself for the children? You know, right now, we have it, and it's horrible. You know, I went last week, glass everywhere, just broken glass. There is paraphernalia everywhere. There are cigarette buds. There's weed wrappers. There's graffiti. There's inappropriate pit drawings on the playground. You know, how can you take your children and when you have an inquisitive three-year-old, four-year-old saying, Mom, what is that? And it's a penis. What am I, you know, and I have to explain to her, well, okay, like, I'm not ready to give you this, you know, this talk, but this is what it is. Mom, what does that word say? Why is there writing everywhere? Mom, why do we have to leave the park and go somewhere else? And that's really sad for me because I came, when we bought property here, great, there's a park down the street. Mind you, it was during COVID and it was, you know, clean, no one was out. But we went to the park and there was no issues. But now that it's open, and I don't feel like it's being regulated by the Parks Department or anybody in the city, and it's like it takes for me to complain about it, that's ridiculous because we pay. We pay to take our kids here. That was a, that was a good standing point for me to buy a house here, and it's just a mess. I, you know, all these things are great, but what's going to happen when this does come here? This is all, this is beautiful. This is ideal. However, how great is it going to be? I'm sorry, I know I'm over my time. How great is it going to be if there's not going to be an upkeep from the city? That's, that's my concern. The graffiti, yeah, we can't change that in people, but how are we going to upkeep with this? It would be a waste of money to have this beautiful thing done and then we just let it go because right now, it's not being taken care of, in my opinion.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One more speaker.
Isabel Don Juan. Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Isabel Don Juan, and I've been living here for three years. I'm very happy. And the first thing I want to thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for the, all the work, the hard work that you have done. I really appreciate that. Okay, the reason of my speaking is because I was concerned that there wasn't going to be any small trail around the park, but I can see it's going to be a small trail around the park. I think it's great because that brings people that not necessarily will have kids to walk around the park. And that, that's a sense of more security because older adults or maybe young people, but not only kids, you know. So I really appreciate that. That's what I want to know. I want to say that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. What I want to say is, first of all, I'm really happy to see this, you know, happen. This park is a very important park to Montclair because obviously the Little League's play here. And so I am happy to see we got to this point here. My question to staff right now, what is our time period? If, what are we looking at going out for a construction bid? Is there, I know we have the design still, and there's a bunch of other things that happen. Is there, is there a time period?
Yes. So now that this concept has been approved by the city, by the Little League, and hopefully by you, you're satisfied with what the architects and the civil engineer has come up with, the solutions to many of the problems with this park, then we can move with final design, which will probably take about a year. Just want to, and then go out to bid. We also applied for a grant, which will hopefully will get some positive results so we can have the funding.
You applied for another grant?
So, yes, we did. So I would say we could start construction, assuming we have all the funding and we move forward with final design, then in two years.
So you're familiar with maybe close to plans done, going out for bid?
Mm-hmm, yes.
All right. Thank you. And I want to note that the, Monique, when she spoke, Monique, am I correct? And I do apologize. You're right. That park does get vandalized a lot, and it's very unfortunate. Now, we spent a lot of money putting that playground equipment in there, and then, you know, I go there and see these knuckleheads doing their vandalism there. And I think it's very important that the design component really takes into account, you know, making sure we minimize vandalism as much as possible. And I don't mean just the material put in, but even visibility, you know, if a police, you know, if we can't see the playground equipment from Kingsley Street, a police officer drives by, he doesn't know or she doesn't know what's going on. So I'm pretty sure the chief said, if you want us to monitor the playground a lot better, make sure it's visible where we can see it or even members of the public can see it, you know. So that's, that's important. So I really want to make sure that we zero in on minimizing every opportunity of vandalism, graffiti, those other things that happen. graffiti, those other things that happen at this park here. So this is for staff, obviously, to really work hard on that, making sure that, that dress as best as we can, and realize, again, doesn't mean it's not going to happen, it's going to happen, but if we just have the things in place to lessen it, that'd be very good to have. Is there a surveillance system in here, too? Are we looking to put a surveillance system at all? Go ahead.
Quick answer is yes, that would be the goal. I know that Sunset Park, that's in those plans, and we would want the same. So I think to your point, if there wasn't the motion detecting, at least you'd have those surveillance cameras that you could tap into and, you know, be able to see what's going on in the park.
Okay, so we'll have, and that's important, too, because I know, even though it's going to be gated, doesn't mean the gates will close, and then even when the gates are open, people will be at the site, and somebody will try to break into something, but we'll have some type of surveillance system at the site, and if somebody commits graffiti, hopefully, we'll see it on cameras, if there's enough cameras out there, we can get a better idea of what's going on out there. Dodgers, LA Dodgers have a foundation, I think I taught to Marcia, that's the grant we're talking about, but if we can try to see the LA Dodgers Foundation, want to get involved in this, they've done other dream fields, so that'd be great. I think that's all I have. Again, great job. Councilman Lopez.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My mind's all over the place writing notes here. Real quickly, Monica, quick question, we're applying for an additional grant. What is the, what is the shortage of funding that we're needing, and what is the purpose?
So we applied for a $4 million grant, we have $2 million from Norma Torres's office, that's $6 million, assuming we get it, and then maybe another $2, $3 million, which will use the lease revenue bond funds to make up for any shortage. But if we don't get the grant, then we have a bigger gap.
That we may have to pull from the bond money?
Yes.
Okay, so we're just trying to compensate for that, and hopefully not take so much out.
Yes.
Okay, got it, got it, thank you, I appreciate that. Monique, I would rather call you by your last name, Miss, what's your last name?
Borja.
Borja, B-O-R-J-A? I share your sentiments. Having coached at the field many times, we were there either for practice or games, we did see many of that illegal activity, which is, which, whether it was drug swaps or questionable activity, and we too saw the paraphernalia, the needles, the pipes, use condoms and whatnot, that shouldn't have been at the park. They're also at the park along Amherst, I believe Sunset Park there, too, many residents were complaining about that. So unfortunately, it does happen, but hopefully with this added lighting that we're hoping to have at this field. And the closed gates, because right now Saratoga's open 24/7, anyone can walk on the property. But nonetheless, hopefully those will mitigate and solve those concerns. But my advice to you is, if you see it again, please, by all means, take a picture, send it into city staff, so we can at least document it, and hopefully get staff to, unfortunately staff to clean it. But thank you for that, but I share your sentiments and concerns. And as far as the illegal car washing business, if you do see that, please call the city, so that way it's stopped right away, and we can get it off property. But nonetheless, I'm overall pleased, thank you, gentlemen, very much pleased.
Yeah, if any car wash activity happens out there, yeah, call, just call the police department, or keep in contact, either one of us, or call City Hall. There should be no car wash going out, going out there, so.
From the apartments?
Yeah, apartments, okay, still, thank you.
But having, having been there, I was in the middle of a thought, having been there as a kid, and being an announcer at the second story of that building, I have a lot of affinity for that park and some great memories, so it's great to see that it's going to be revamped, brought up to speed, state-of-the-art park, something that we haven't had in a while. So thank you to all of you that had a hand in it, and for investing in the city, we appreciate it.
Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. I just wanted to make the point, I didn't say it earlier, because it wasn't a question, but I'm pleased that the restrooms are going to be moved closer to the playground, and correct me if I'm wrong, but generally, the idea is that the more visibility and the more neighbor presence you have in those locations, the more it's going to deter the crime and vandalism. So I think that will help greatly, rather than having the restrooms set back where it's easy for somebody to hide out. And the fact that it's getting a nice revamp, it's going to have an office, I don't know if the existing one has an office, but that's going to be wonderful for Little League meetings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does staff need more directions from Council, Ed?
It's our understanding that the council approves this concept, and is agreeable to staff moving forward with design?
All right, so then we'll, if there are no objections, then it's ordered, and then move forward with this particular design, and it sounds like a year from now, it might come back to us for further action, so. Okay, thank you very much, we are done with the, this portion of the meeting, and we'll have the regular city council meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you.